Calling the meeting to order of the Southwick, Tallinn, Granville Regional School Committee Tuesday, March 2nd at 6:06. As a reminder for public comment, if you'd like to make a public comment this evening, please send an email to superintendent@stgrsd.org and make sure that your name and address are in the body of the email, please. Okay, before we get going this evening, we're gonna pause for a moment of silence. Jen, if you'd like to.
On February 21st, 2021, Woodland School lost their beloved secretary, Janine Duquette, who passed away unexpectedly. Janine had been with the district for nine years, and her daughter is a first-grade teacher at Woodland. Janine had a gentle kindness that touched so many lives. Our sincerest condolences go out to Janine's family and also to her school family. Please join me for a moment of silence and remembrance. Thank you. And in Janine's memory, Woodland School has designated Friday, March 5th, as Sunshine Day. Janine was a ray of sunshine, and her favorite color was yellow. So you will see the Woodland staff and students wearing yellow on Friday in her memory. She will be missed.
Thank you. Okay, in everybody's packet, there was a secretary's report dated February 16th, 2021. We'll entertain a motion to accept the secretary's report.
Summer.
A second.
School board members have any questions, comments, or changes to the secretary's report? Hearing none, we're gonna do a roll call vote, starting with Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Jeff is yes. That's a 6-0-0. Okay, warrant articles, you should receive an email this afternoon from Amy. Please make sure you sign the warrant articles and return them to Amy at your earliest convenience. Jen, any correspondence this evening?
I do. I wanted to let you know that we received a waiver for our preschool program due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our integrated preschool programs' classrooms located at Woodland Elementary School did not meet the necessary ratios. And just to make it short, that they did approve how we are handling in our staffing and our enrollment at our preschools for this year only for the ratios.
So Jen, when you say they didn't make the required ratios, in which way? Can you explain that?
For our class five is a preschool. We usually have it about 15, where we have usually about seven to eight special needs, and then we have about eight peers in the classroom. So it's about a 50-50 split. This year, we did not have as many peers in the classroom because of the size and the social distancing. And so we had to prioritize the needs of our students on an IEP to get them into the classroom. So we didn't meet ratio of peers to students on an IEP.
Any other questions on this? Superintendent, do you have any other correspondence?
I do. I'm going to steal a little bit of Steve's thunder here, but for the past, I don't know, two or three years, Steve's been really working on getting some cybersecurity awareness in Southwick, Tallinn, Granville. And he ran, saw a grant application a few weeks ago, and he applied for it, and we were accepted into the cybersecurity awareness program. Steve, do you want to talk anymore about it?
Just, just real quickly, we've been trying to come up with a good approach to cybersecurity awareness training. It's been an initiative of the technology director, Mr. Grimaldi, and myself. And we were marching down a particular path, ready to pull some triggers when we became aware of this particular program that's being run by the executive office of technology security. So what this will do is provide some training at no cost to the district, some training to all staff members, support staff, teachers, administration, and also some simulated phishing emails to just kind of test folks on where they're at with complying with good best practices as far as cybersecurity. There have been some really horrific stories of other school districts or municipalities across the Commonwealth, of course, across the nation, where they might have been, fell victim to ransomware, where you now have somebody probably in a foreign country looking for many thousands, if not millions, of dollars in Bitcoin. Sometimes districts or municipalities wind up paying, paying the ransom. Sometimes they don't. Your data is held hostage. Your data can be corrupted. So the need is, is pretty severe, pretty important, and we're happy that we're able to participate in this program that EOTSS has provided. Once, the program is a one-year program. Once that is completed, it'll probably be our recommendation that we continue on with some type of continued training and simulated phishing expeditions. So just to make sure that new people coming on board are getting the proper training and that we're not letting our guard down with respect to protecting the district's data and network resources.
Any questions for Steve or Jen on this? Okay, last one. Superintendent?
I apologize, I was muted. So this is really important, this new updated transportation guidance. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but Amy, if you skip the next page right here, where it says distance, "As of February 2021, physical distancing guidelines and results of bus capacities have been updated per below. Districts may adopt these updated standards only when the required mitigation measures outlined in the rest of this guidance document, wearing masks, opening windows, etc." We are going to have to adopt this if we intend to get all of our students back to school pre-Ks and stuff. We're going to have to have more students on our buses. The new updated guidelines for our elementary school, the capacity limitations and physical distancing requirements for the buses are completely lifted. For middle and high school, in districts with high community prevalence, the capacity limitations and physical distancing requirements on buses are amended to allow two students per bench. It's really important to notice ventilation. We have to keep windows open at all times during operations, at least two inches. In adverse weather conditions, every other window can be opened. Districts should develop a rain plan to keep students dry when riding in the faucet raining conditions. The rest of it is the same, students should be assigned to a single bus in a particular seat. We are currently doing that, and the bus monitors are on as-needed basis. I think the big thing to point out is that they are allowing more students on buses, which will allow us to provide more in-person learning because we'll be able to get more students to school. So once we roll out our plan in the upcoming weeks, we will be bringing forward change in guidelines on transportation to adopt these updated standards.
What in the world would a rain plan be? Provide rain jackets?
You know what, Chelsea, I'm not sure yet. I'm going to have a meeting with other, I'll be back to you for instance, Friday morning, and that is one of the things on our list, is to talk about what this rain plan is.
Okay.
So does this mean that students are less than three feet apart on the bus?
It will be, yes.
Three inches.
So I'm just curious as to why that's okay.
Then we have to wear masks on the bus, and the windows are open for ventilation.
That seems strange.
And were these put out by Desi?
Yes. These are Desi's new transportation guidelines that were updated.
Any other questions for Superintendent on the transportation? To our first public comment. Amy, if you'd be so kind to check the superintendent account.
Chairman Hou, I do not have any public comments.
Moving on to the student advisory report.
Hi, everyone. Happy March. So the report for tonight is that overall hybrid students are enjoying the hybrid model with hopes to eventually return full-time once it's safe to do so. The winter sports season has ended. Girls varsity basketball ended up winning three out of the four games that they played. Boys varsity basketball won four out of the four games that they played. Varsity ice hockey won one out of the seven games that they played, and the ski team had a fun yet short season. Fall Two has officially started with the extension of both boys' and girls' basketball. Girls volleyball and the unified basketball team have begun as well. With the commencement of Fall Two Sports Season, SRS Student Councils hosting a school-wide poster contest, students can create a poster to help cheer on our student athletes and have a chance to win a $25 Dunkin' Donuts gift card. All appropriate submissions will be hung in the gym and judged by Mr. Pescatelli. More information can be found on the school Facebook page, and submissions can be dropped off in front of the school on Friday, March 5th. A group of students have been invited to attend the Connections Conference held by Sutton High School. Students will learn about fighting injustices in schools and communities over a virtual seminar on March 24th. SRS Conferences will be held on Monday, or sorry, Wednesday, March 3rd, at 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., and 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Parents can email teachers with questions about scheduling. For juniors, the Richard Atkinson Scholarship, striving for, striving for excellence is due on March 31st. Also for juniors, the Massachusetts Boys State and Girls State for 2021 will be held from Saturday, June 12th through Friday, June 18th at Stonehill College. Class of 2022 students can check their emails for more information. The SRS GSA Club is still selling T-shirts. The order form can be found on the school website. Core selection for the 2021-2022 school year will be, will be starting in a couple of weeks. The ASVAB test is being offered in school next week. Armed Services Vocational Attitude Battery is a multiple-choice test that helps you identify which Army jobs, military occupational specialties would be the best for you. Grade Nine Information Night is on Wednesday, March 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Grade Eight families can attend a Zoom to learn about valuable information on the next four years of high school. More information can be found on the guidance page on the school website. And that concludes tonight's student advisory report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the students?
Annette, what was the name of the conference that the students are gonna attend?
It's the Connections Conference. It was like, it's a recommendation by a few teachers, and it's just about leadership. It's a all-day seminar. I could send you more information if you want.
Sure, or it might be neat to hear from the students afterwards.
Yeah, definitely. It's on the 24th, and I think the next meeting will be on the 30th. I'm attending, so I definitely can update everybody on it.
Oh, great. Thank you. Have fun.
Questions for the students? Thank you again for your report out. Moving on to educational presentations, first is Principal Tumel on the SRS Program Studies.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. The 2021-2022 school year program of studies does not have a significant amount of changes. It will continue just for a middle school schedule that has six classes, approximately 58 minutes in length, English, math, social studies, science, a foreign language, and an encore period as well. It has a rotation of gym health, PE, and technology. The program of studies will also support the high school schedule, where we continue to run a four-by-four block schedule, four courses each semester, approximately 84 minutes in length, with the, with the core courses, the various selectives, AP courses, and the continued partnership with the collaborative and virtual high school courses as well. The two changes to highlight this, this coming year's program of studies is from our tech department. Discovering Computer Science has been a high school course that has been offered for the last three to four years. We are moving this course in the course description to the middle school level to accommodate and to bridge the gap of what the students are learning and the skills they are acquiring at Powder Mill. We feel that they are ready for this course, and the scope and sequence aligns with what they're learning at Powder Mill and can, can do this work in seventh grade. The computer programming course at the high school level, it is a new course description, and there are new units of study within the curriculum. It is not a completely new curriculum, but there are components of this course that Ms. Trasko is adding to it, again, to meet the students' skill level. As we know, our students are coming into our schools, into these courses with more and more technology skills each and every year, and we want to make sure that we're meeting their needs and preparing them for the next level. And the new components, the new units of study in this computer programming course prepare students for college-level technology courses. Ms. Trasko has been part of numerous committees and study groups to look at the courses and the next steps to prepare the students. I have her with me tonight. She's also the department chair of the technology department to, to explain further what these courses are offering. She did present this to ILT earlier this, earlier the month of February to get their approval on the changes. ILT supported the movement of these two courses and the changing of the course descriptions. Melissa, do you have anything to add about these two courses that I might have missed?
No, I think you hit everything.
All right. Chairman Hou, I'll open it up to any questions about the program of studies.
Any questions from the committee?
So somebody might have just asked this question. I'm sorry, I just was temporarily reading something else. So Joe, these are the, this is the only change to the current program of studies, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought.
Any other committee questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Superintendent Willard and Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Presnell will be presenting the FY '22 budget.
Thank you very much. I apologize. I'm not quite sure why I keep cutting in and out tonight, but we are here to prepare and present to you our initial FY '22 budget. In order to, I did it a little bit differently this year because, because of COVID, and nothing would match up similar to what we did last year for this year. So if you will just indulge me at the beginning part of this presentation. Next slide, Amy. So the projected timeline, today's, we're presenting it to the school committee. March 16th, we will take any changes that the school committee is providing us tonight, any feedback that you are providing us tonight, and we will have a public hearing with all those changes for the public on March 16th. We have April in there as the House Ways and Means budget proposal. May come out earlier in March this year. We're not quite sure of the timeline, so I have May, April, because that's when it usually comes up. March 30th, we will be taking a school committee vote, and in May, we will be bringing the budget to the three towns at town meeting. As always, I like to start off our budget with our initiatives, because the initiatives are what drive our budget and what we should be spending our money on. So last year, we knew that we needed to add some additional social-emotional support at Woodland School. We did start a program this year at Woodland School with a social-emotional teacher. We are also going to continue with that social-emotional support at Powder Mill School as well for next year. For professional development, we are ending our pre-year math initiative with Mount Polio College, and we are beginning a year-one program of our new literacy program that we did get at the end of last school year. But we're, this year, we just put it in the hands of teachers, and next year, we will really dive into it. On grade seven through 12, really working on universal design for learning. What that means in regular language is that we're designing lessons for everybody. So what's good for some is good for all, and making sure that our lessons are accessible to all students. And again, especially when kids are returning from COVID, we are still continuing to work on trauma-informed best practices. A neat addition because of COVID is that we are in our full implementation of one-to-one student-to-device. We were not planning to get there for another two years, but we are fully implemented once we receive our computers that we did order last May. We still have not received them. I'll let Steve talk about that later, but we will, we are expecting them for next year. Finally, this is something that the commissioner has tasked all school districts with, and it's to identify and respond to any learning losses that we find when our students return back to full in-person learning due to the past year and a half of COVID education. All school districts are different. All school districts are in different places. We were one of the fortunate school districts that had our pre-K to four in five days a week, but we had, and our, but we did have some students who don't do as well with remote learning. So even though we have a hybrid plan, it's, it's just not the same as our students being with us every day. So Jenny Sullivan, Robin Gunn, and myself are going to be working on plans to identify through data and have a plan to respond to any learning loss that our students have due to the remote learning and the hybrid learning over the course of this year. So getting into the budget, we knew that we were going to see a dip this year in our foundation enrollment. Our foundation enrollment is what they base our federal money on and our Chapter 70 money and the required local contributions. So last year, we saw, we had 1,415 students in our foundation budget. This year, we are at 1,321. A very drastic change in our student enrollment of about 100 students, which definitely, you will see later, does have an impact on required local contributions. This is not a trend that is new or only belongs to Southwick. This is the trend, Southwick, Tallinn, and Granville. This is a trend across the entire state right now. A lot of families have kept their kids home in kindergarten. They just felt that this would not be the year to send them, as kindergarten's not mandatory. We're planning for that, as you will see in the upcoming slides. This is one slide that is, again, very unique to our budget this year. Our fixed cost increases usually go up anywhere between $6,000 to $700,000 a year. This year, our salary and wage adjustments, which is usually the greatest impact on our fixed cost increases, is about $550,000. This year, our group health insurance actually went down $130,000 due to the usage, and our contractual obligations this year are zero. We don't have anybody retiring this year. Interestingly enough, our vocational tuitions, again, dipped $60,000, and our pension assessment dipped $160,000. Now, that pension assessment is what I spoke to people about last year. A lot of this has to, is attributed to our transportation department. We weren't going to actualize the savings last year, but we, we were anticipating seeing the savings in the FY '22 budget, and that's where that you, you see them this year. So our budget and our fixed cost increases actually only went up $200,000 this year over last year, which is very minimal. The school committee, you were provided with staff roster lists. Just wanted to go over briefly as an overview about the changes to all three of the schools. So in this year's budget, we eliminated any positions that were unfilled due to people leaving or changes that we made over the course of this year, or if they were in ESER position. An ESER position is a grant that we received at the beginning of the year to help with staffing and any other COVID-related costs. So the lead teacher position at Woodland School, we did have it in last year's budget. We did eliminate it in this year's budget because we didn't fill it last year, and if it is a position of need, I could always come back to the school committee. But right now, we feel that it is not a position we need, as we do have the social-emotional teacher in the budget. The kindergarten teacher and the kindergarten paraprofessional, due to actual enrollment, these positions would not have been filled this year due to the kindergarten enrollment. However, if you look underneath, we are re-adding the kindergarten or first-grade teacher and the kindergarten paraprofessional under ESER II money, as we are anticipating a larger-than-usual either kindergarten class or first-grade class. We're not quite sure, but we are anticipating a bump. And we also did not fill the receptionist position last year, and we will not be filling it again this year. Now, positions that we're adding under ESER II. So ESER II was a grant that we just received for about $909,000. And I sent the school committee a fact sheet, what the purpose for is for ESER II, and the main function of ESER II is to really help support learning loss and to help with any other COVID-related expenses. So we know and we can anticipate that due to COVID, we're going to have a bubble teacher, either at kindergarten or first grade, depending on when and where our families enroll their children. We also would like to keep a building-based substitute, because we know COVID is not going anywhere, and there may be times where a teacher may need to quarantine for two weeks, or if they get sick, they need to be out of the building, and we would like some stability in our Or if they get sick, they need to be out of the building, and we would like some stability in our school buildings to be able to plan for that. And also because we know COVID is not going anywhere, we'd like to keep the nurse that we filled this year and fill it with an ESR two budget. It says halftime because it's halftime at Woodland. It would be halftime at Powder Mill that you'll see in a minute. Changes to Powder Mill. Due to the COVID nineteen space limitations, we had to hire three class-size reduction teachers. Those three positions have been eliminated. And we've also eliminated the receptionist position at Powder Mill School. The positions that we're adding under the ESR two grant is we would like to add two interventionists. Those will specifically deal with students who have experienced learning loss. And it will target those students and work those students as a tier two, possibly a tier three instruction. It's the other half of the floating nurse that will be available at Powder Mill as well. And we'd also like to have another building-based substitute there due to, again, if a teacher needs to go out and quarantine or get COVID or they're close contact, we need to be able to have some consistency in the building with somebody who's very familiar with school routines. Changes to Southwick Regional School. We did not fill the technology position that we had last year. We do not need to fill this position this year. We're able to cover all the technology courses with the staff we currently have. We had two paraprofessional positions that we did not fill at the regional school this year. And we also have a hallway monitor position that we did not fill. However, one position that we're going to add this year is a special education teacher. Last year, we did remove special education teacher at Southwick Regional School. And we really feel that a special education teacher can help support the learning loss. And we can have that additional support for our students. And that position is actually in the regular budget, operating budget. The position that we're adding under ESR two are two building-based substitutes due to the size and the amount of teaching staff that they have at Southwick Regional School. We felt it would be best to have two building-based substitutes. Changes to the district. We are eliminating the zero point six payroll specialist that we had last year in the budget. We are going to eliminate that position in its entirety. And we also had, were able to, the school committee approved additional substitute custodian that we did not fill this year, so we are not refilling that position. However, over the course of the year, we did add a computer network technician that we will be keeping in the budget this year, very needed as we really moved forward with our one-to-one initiative. And again, I believe he is a Southwick graduate that we hired. He has done amazing. And Steve, I will now turn the budget presentation over to you.
Jen, can you, I have a really quick question that I just want to clarify before we move on, before I forget.
Sure.
Those changes that you were just going over from school, based on school and district, I just want to clarify that I'm understanding correctly. The eliminations that, you know, were eliminated this year, you are proposing that those those positions stay eliminated, that they're going to remain unfilled, and we're not bringing back those positions, correct?
Yes, they are not in the budget that we presented to you. I, it was kind of an overview summary of all those line items that we gave you. I just wanted to synthesize it down so that we gave you pages of people.
Right.
That were eliminated. This is what was added with kind of just a quick summary page of those pages that you were handed.
So going from where we currently are to the proposed budget for next year, what's staying are the things that you have listed that were added?
Yes.
Okay.
And under ESR two.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to confirm that you folks all received the detailed line item budget that was distributed last week. Hopefully, you all got that as well as the personnel roster. Basically, name's not there, but I should call it a position roster. And those numbers should tie back to the detailed budget line document that you, that you should have received via email late last week. As you can see, the total budget for, the total appropriation budget for FY twenty-two is decreasing by two hundred ninety-two, two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars or, or one point one two percent versus where we are with an approved budget for the current year. Some of the, some of the big drivers of the reduced expenditures, Superintendent Willard pointed out. Employee benefits, significant reductions to group health insurance. The Maya Health Trust is putting forth new rates, which you'll be asked to vote on or approve at an upcoming meeting. The group health plans were being, premium rates being reduced by one-half of one percent. That's a bit unusual. Usually, we're, we're pretty excited when they hold the, hold the rate. But this year, they are dropping it by just a hair over one-half of one percent. We've also seen a shift over time to our less costly plans which have a, a small deductible associated with it. Some of the newer employees who are coming on board when looking at our employee benefit options are, are opting for that, that lower-cost plan. So over time, that has helped to lower our, our group health costs. Also, as Superintendent mentioned, the pension assessment from the Hammond County Retirement System went down by about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Most of that directly attributable to the outsourcing of transportation to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. And that's consistent with what we had predicted last year. The next slide, or do I have control? Okay, great. As far as assessments go, the, the budget document as it exists right now, and again, it's in draft form, and there are moving pieces and parts to this as, as we go forward. Each day, we're, we're getting some, you know, additional or refined information, which would lead us to maybe tweak, tweak something here or there. And we'll keep you apprised of that along the way. So as we go from this evening through to the end of March, when you folks are voting on a proposed budget for fiscal twenty-two, we will make you aware of any changes that we make to the, the numbers that you're looking at here. So with, with respect to the assessments, some interesting things at play here. If you recall, the committee voted on a budget last spring that was based largely in, on the governor's House Two budget proposal that he had released in January. All three towns were in agreement with, with using those estimates and basically, you know, rolled the dice, I guess, on where the assessment numbers might actually come out. The minimum required contribution that, that was ultimately approved by the legislature was significantly lower, several hundred thousand dollars lower than the numbers that we used in our, to build our budget for FY twenty-one. And we'll, we'll talk about that in a little more detail in a few minutes. So with the budget where it is right now, we see Southwick with an increase of one hundred and twenty-nine, almost one hundred and thirty thousand dollars over the current year. Tallinn would see a decrease of twenty thousand and Granville a decrease of just under fourteen thousand dollars. Some of the things that are driving the, the increases, the increased assessment for Southwick is we, we are seeing some reductions in available, well, what we've used thus far in our, in this iteration of the budget, reductions in certain revenue sources. Maybe starting from the bottom, the FY twenty-two transportation reimbursement as put forth by Governor Baker, his House One proposal, almost, or actually a little over a hundred thousand dollars less than what we based our FY twenty-one budget on. Right now, we're, we're, we have a seven hundred thousand dollar contribution from our E and D account. That, again, it's akin to free cash for, for municipality. That number is, you know, though it's in there as a placeholder right now, we could possibly bump that, bump that number up. We've been doing some analysis of our current year operating budget and doing projections going forward, where we're going to be at the end of this fiscal year. And there are some significant savings just based on the way the year has played out and the impact of COVID that could be utilized to, you know, increase a contribution from, from E and D to the FY twenty-two budget. And then up at the top of the list, last year, we shifted expense to try to reduce or eliminate a discretionary assessment from the three towns. We shifted some expense to the school choice revolving account, a little more than we typically do. This year, we're, we're back maybe a little closer to where we have been historically. But again, we also have some flexibility there as well. We're, this budget is based on eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of utilization of school choice revolving funds. For the current year, we're at nine sixty-seven, about a hundred thousand dollar difference there. We could possibly devote more expense to the school choice revolving account. So there's some, there's some options there. Next slide. Do you want to talk about this one, Jen, or can we continue?
So I always like to give people like the highlights of the budget. So if people ask, you know, what is unique to this year's budget? Well, the ESR two grant, we've never had that before. And we are actually putting some positions in there that are not recurring positions that we're only using this grant money to fund positions that are temporary and needed to help support learning loss. Or in the event of COVID, the floating nurse and the building-based subs. We also, another highlight to this budget is there was a decrease to certain fixed costs. We've not seen that in years, and this is the first time we've seen it in three of our four fixed cost centers. We're also, we're planning on moving into a full implement, we were planning on moving into year three of our one-to-one initiative. And we're actually moving into full implementation of our one-to-one initiative. So we sped that up. And there was also a decrease in required local contributions this year. Usually, required local contributions go up, but with the ninety-three student dip in our foundation budget, the required local contributions did take a dip this year. Do you want me to explain this one to Steve?
Sorry, that was an affirmative.
Okay. So if you look at two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two, in two thousand twenty, the required local contribution at the time of the presentation was two hundred ninety-seven thousand. And that is what the minimum that our three towns gave us in required local contribution. Last year, when we passed the budget, the minimum required local contribution was three hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-three.
If I could just jump in, so those are the increases. So that's the, the year-to-year increase and not, not the dollar figure. Yep.
So when we presented our budget, we went forward with the increase of three hundred fifty-one thousand seven thirty-three. In actuality, when the budget was finalized in November, the actual increase was thirteen thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars in required local contribution. We did share this at the Budget Roundtable with all the three towns. And the reason that we did not do anything with it was because at the time, we still haven't received any money. They also decreased our regional transportation reimbursement. And so it was pretty much a wash between the additional money that was paid in required local contribution and what was eliminated from the transportation reimbursement. So this year, when we say that the required local contribution, the increase was forty-four thousand dollars. That forty-four thousand dollars actually is on thirteen thousand dollars, not on the three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars that was approved last year. So we're looking at between two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two an increase in about fifty-seven thousand dollars in required local contributions, which is very insignificant if you look at what we usually get in one year. So I just wanted to share that because that is a big discrepancy. We usually do not see a discrepancy that significant between what we ask for in our required local contribution and what the actual required local contribution comes up with.
If I could, if I could just add, add to that, Jen, so Southwick is seeing an increase, but the other two towns are seeing a decrease to their required local contribution versus the, the final official numbers that the legislature and the governor approved back in the fall.
An increase on the thirteen thousand, not an increase on the three fifty-one.
So can, let me just make sure I'm getting this right, because you know, this is not my strong. So we thought, going into the twenty twenty-one budget, we thought that the MLC increase was going to be three hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-three.
That's what it was in the governor's budget, yes.
Okay, but it turned out to be only an increase of thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-three.
Or close to it, yes.
Okay. Can, can you explain to me why such a discrepancy?
I, that would require me to get deep into the legislature's thought process on this.
Okay, so it's just enough to see that was a legislative decision that we just didn't see coming.
Yes, well, I, I would, I wouldn't say that we didn't see it coming, but I think there was no way to predict where that number was going to go. And we did disclose at all three town meet, annual town meetings and leading up to that, that, you know, none of us were confident that the governor's number was going to hold. We were seeing at the time tax revenues at the state level and in some cases at the local levels just drying up, you know, the, the state was hemorrhaging, hemorrhaging money. And the question of whether or not they were going to be able to sustain the typical increases to local aid and chapter seventy funding was in question. So that, that information was disclosed. The three towns all agreed that they were willing to, willing to go with the governor's number, even though there was concern that we would see dramatic reductions, never mind just a, a very modest increase, but potential reductions to required local contributions. And as it played out, it wasn't until the fall that the legislature came up with a local aid resolution, which also included the chapter seventy figure. And I want to say it was late November, maybe early December, by the time the legislature passed the budget with those, with that local aid numbers in it. you know, far, far too late to really do anything about it. And there were some other revenue sources that were decreased. So it, it, it just didn't make any sense. And we did present to, to the three towns that, you know, what the scenarios might be if we were to amend, we would of course had to amend the budget. And nobody was really in favor or supportive of that.
I think a big piece of this, Pam, is at the same time, it was about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars was removed from our transportation reimbursement and transportation is a non-discretionary. So that cost would have been put back to the towns as well. So there was a very minimal difference between potential and required local contributions and with the potential of the decrease in the transportation reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, are you going to do this one?
Yep, 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 I was just unmuting. So capital improvements, if you recall, if the committee recalls, last year, we, we had a a decreased plan to decrease our borrowing for capital improvements, driven basically by the fact that we were no longer in need of replacing school, school transportation vehicles. So that was an opportunity to reduce some of our capital spending, although certainly there were other, other things that we needed to do. So it wasn't necessarily a one-for-one loss of, or reduction in, in capital borrowing. But in response to the challenges around COVID and the uncertainty around the financial picture for particularly municipalities, that the committee agreed to provide some relief on the borrowing front. And that's actually playing out in terms of our debt service this year. When we, when we take a look at our budget summary, you'll see the annual capital improvement borrowing debt service going down in FY twenty-two. So for FY twenty, for FY twenty-two, we're looking to reinstate some of the things that were originally included in FY twenty-one's capital borrowing request before it was amended by the committee prior to going to the, to the towns for their annual town meeting approval. And those are the items that are bolded and italicized. But starting up at the top, the, obviously, we need to continue to invest in our IT infrastructure. We're, this summer, we will be completing phase two of our fiber, fiber optic network upgrade. Much of the upgrade was done during the summer of twenty, two thousand and twenty. But now we have the, the actual job of replacing the optical network terminals that are located throughout, throughout the building. So that's a large part of that hundred thousand dollar figure. The, the project is actually about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but we're utilizing E-rate grant funds to cover, we get a sixty percent reimbursement. So the net cost of, of that project is reflected here as well as a couple of other things, including replacing some network switches and the configuration server. We have a utility truck used by our Buildings and Grounds Department. So we got a thirty-five thousand dollar cost there. And then the other things which should look familiar to you because they were on the docket last year, paving the parking lot alongside Powder Mill Road that is in desperate need of a, of a replacement. So we've got that on this year's list along with some improvements to the gymnasium at the Southwick Regional School. The vestibule at the, the main entry for the Southwick Regional School requires some supplemental heating to avoid potential pipe freeze-ups. We talked about that last year, that, that is back on the docket for FY twenty-two as well as some grounds maintenance equipment, which will allow us to, to do a better job with maintaining and improving the playing fields and, and other grounds on, on the campus. The total, I anticipated three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, well below where we had been back when we were, when we were responsible for equipping a fleet of school buses where we were in recent years typically looking more at five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. So this is, this is the typical budget summary document that you folks voted on. Again, it's in draft form right now. You can see that expenditures dipping from twenty-six point two million in FY twenty-one to twenty-five point nine million, a little under three hundred thousand dollar reduction. We do however, see an increase in the assessment for the town of Southwick. The other two towns are, we're seeing a reduction. And that's kind of a function of how their minimum local contribution is, is working. Are there any questions from the committee on some of the detailed documents that, that you're in receipt of? Were there things that you, you wanted me to speak to? And I, I may be able to answer them this evening, or it may be something I have to research or get back to you. And I'm happy to, to speak to those if you have anything.
This is Chelsea. I have a question and I'm not sure it necessarily is for Steve or for Jen. But I was thinking about how we're thinking of, let me restart. So there's less kindergartners. A lot of families decided that kindergartners would stay home this year. I'm imagining that for many of them, they could either decide to send their kid, their child to kindergarten older, or they could decide to enroll their child in first grade without the kindergarten experience. And so potentially you could have really a first grade full of sort of kindergartners. But I was noticing that the amount of paraprofessionals for first grade teachers is zero compared to one for every teacher for kindergarten. And I was wondering if that was something was, that was considered. I'm just thinking their needs are going to be a lot different. They're going to be way less experienced, their academic needs are going to be higher. I know what those kindergartners look like coming in.
Yeah, we do have that kindergarten para. And if the need is there, then that position can be filled under the Easter two to go into the first grade classroom as well.
Okay.
We don't know where they're going to order their kids. So we, we are just anticipating either a kindergarten or a first grade teacher. And we have a parent already in the Easter two budget.
Okay.
Other committee questions?
Chairman Hulip, I could just point out, if you look, go back to that budget summary sheet that Mr. Presnel just presented on the last one. He does have the entire nine hundred and nine thousand dollars in there for the Easter two grant. With all the positions that I've mentioned today, only about three hundred and fifty to three, three fifty is what we are expending out of that amount of money for the additional staff for next year. But we still have the significant pot of money left in the Easter two grant. And we will also be, any additional PPE or cleaning supplies will be coming out of that money as well.
Right, I should, I should mention that, that grant, I don't know if we did mention this earlier, but that grant has the ability to be carried over a two-year period. So it could be used right through June of two thousand and twenty-three. So our, our approach is to utilize it to the extent that it's needed this year, but also recognizing there may be some needs in the following year that would, that would still be eligible and, you know, keeping some of that available in the event that, that it is needed.
This is Chelsea again, Superintendent Willard. At the beginning, you talked about MTSS, the multi-tiered support system, for focusing in that Easter grant, I believe, on math and ELA. And I think I remember at the beginning of our year, we talked about social emotional supports with MTSS.
Yeah.
And sending out, it just reminded me that we took those surveys about our students, our children, personal children. And if, I don't know if we ended up with a report back on how that was going or if we're continuing that support, level of support.
I'm, I'm not sure of the question.
The question, um, if it seemed like we are taking on another level of that, or another tier of that support system by taking on the social emotional, by giving out the, the survey, gathering data about our students. And then I was wondering if interventions were put in place for whoever was identified and if we would be continuing that and if that was something that could also be supported.
I can look into that. I know that we have had the school adjustment counselors in all of the classrooms this year, especially when your kids were home remote. I'm sure you saw the school adjustment counselors to really support that tier two in the MTSS. But we do have Jenny and Robin on here who are working a little bit more closely with the MTSS. They may have something that they can add to it as well.
Sure, this is Robin. Chelsea, that's a great question. The, the MTSS model, as I think we talked about earlier in the year, is, is really a terrific model. And, and yes, we are working to build our tiers of support. So your question is a great one. We didn't create a report after we did those surveys, which we should when we do it, if we do it again. But yes, the, the kids who were identified through the survey or through direct contact with parents were followed up and are being caught through, you know, one-on-one conversations with an adjustment counselor, small groups, or as Jen just referred to, the, the time that the adjustment counselors are spending in the classrooms.
I just didn't, I guess, well, I know that there's amazing work going on and lots of support in our schools. So I was just imagine, wondering if there was a focus on increasing that level of support or just in the same idea that reading and math were on our list, that type of thing.
Yeah, but you know, the, the, being a trauma-informed school is something that we've been working on for, gosh, two or three years. So it's very much in the fabric of, of what we do every day. I think that the, the focus on the reading and math here is absolutely an addition to that work. But your point is well taken that we need to continue to highlight the work that's being done to support our students' social and emotional health.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other committee comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Presnel again. I, I would just say that, you know, we'll have a, another finance subcommittee meeting. We've already had a couple with a focus on FY twenty-two budget. I think we've got another, our standing meeting scheduled for next week, if I'm not mistaken. And we'll dive deeper into the weeds. If, if there are some, if there is some guidance, some direction that you, you want to see us take some of this, whether that's with respect to assessments or how, how we're utilizing fun, funding sources that we have, certainly convey that to either Superintendent Willard or myself or through the, through the finance subcommittee. And we certainly take that into consideration as we prepare for the public budget hearing on the sixteenth. And from there, the, after that, the actual adoption of a operating budget for action by the, the three towns at their annual town meetings.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I just want to thank Superintendent Willard and Mr. President, all the Director of Finance and Operations for putting this presentation together. I know there's been a lot of moving parts to it this year. And I just appreciate your thoroughness.
Chairman Hulip, can I just thank the Finance Subcommittee? I know it was a lengthy meeting last week, but you really helped with the direction that we needed to go in. And again, another challenging budget to put together when we don't know anything. But I appreciate the guidance and support from the Finance Subcommittee. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to policies, we don't have any this evening, on to action items.
Move to approve the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two district calendar revision one point five recommended.
Still moved?
A second.
Any questions on the calendar? Superintendent Willard, I, I have one question. And we talked about a big investment in professional development for the two programs in the previous presentation. Are we sure that we want to do professional development in the middle of the school year or right before the holiday break?
That was the feedback we received from the teachers this year. They said that when they do it at the beginning of the school year, their minds are just focused on the kids coming in, setting up their classrooms, and they're not really, they don't know the kids who are in front of them when they receive the professional development. They said that they are comparing it to the kids they had last year. It felt that when they had the professional development midway through the year, that they, they knew the kids that were in front of them and they were able to apply it better. This is us trying to be responsive to the feedback that we received from our teachers and trying to turn what we learned from COVID into better educational practices. So that was a direct result from the input from our teachers. And I, I.
I guess my, my question is, does it fit in with those two programs though, time-wise?
If I could add to that, Chairman Hulip, this is Jenny Sullivan, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We did leave one day in September, so the thinking being that we would kind of kick off with, with the initiatives, get everybody sort of acclimated towards the goals for the year. And then we have instructional coaches that will continue that instruction or that professional development embedded into their classroom instruction through weekly PLCs, through co-teaching in the classroom and really get digging into it, which is feedback from teachers and also studies show that that type of coaching is best professional development. And then mid-year would give us a couple of days to sort of regroup and think about our goals for the second half of the year after what we learned from the first half. So I feel pretty confident that this will be a good fit for the initiatives that we are focused on for this year.
Jenny, you wouldn't need any outside sources. I was just thinking it might be hard to schedule anybody for that time of year in December.
It's actually easier, Chelsea, because we're not competing with everybody else for the first week of September and the last week of August.
All right.
Any other questions on the calendar? Okay, hearing none. We will do a roll call vote. Pam, you're up first.
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes six zeros, bro.
Move to approve the generous donation of two thousand medical fees from Southwick Rotary Club. Total value. Total value approximately one thousand eight hundred dollars recommended.
Still moved?
A second.
Uh, any questions on the donation? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes, thank you.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, motion passes six zeros zero. Okay, moving on to reports, uh, first Superintendent Willard.
Uh, my report will be quick tonight, I just want to let the community know that the Commissioner uh is going to the Board of Education this week to change the time on learning requirement. And he is going to be mandating that all students at the elementary level return after full in person uh at the elementary level by April fifth. We will still be offering remote for the remainder of the school year, so I don't want to cause any panic there. And we will be sending out a survey to all families once we get the specifics of what this impact will have on our district, uh, to ask families if they're going to continue with in-person, or if they want to continue with remote. Uh, and then we will build our plan around the information that we collect. So you will be getting another survey, we apologize, um, they keep changing the rules as we go this year. We want to be responsive to all stakeholders in our community, our families, our children, our staff, uh, and get the most uh today information, provide the best education possible for our children. So we'll be looking for a survey uh as soon as we get our guideline, thank you.
Questions for Superintendent Willard? Okay, moving on to the Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Presnel?
Uh, nothing to report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, moving on to subcommittees. I think from negotiations. Okay, Finance Subcommittee, we just indicated we do have a meeting coming up to work on finalizing the budget. Pam, any update on LPVAC?
Um, I'm looking at my, my notes right now from last week's meeting, um, trying to see if there's anything that really sticks out. Um, I think the only thing that really sticks out is, um, you know what, come back to me.
Okay. Uh, Policy Subcommittee, I believe you guys had a meeting this week, any update?
We had a super productive meeting. Um, we talked about a lot of policies, none of them are ready, obviously, for your review today. Um, but in the next, I think, two meetings from now, we'll have a lot for our first read. We talked about um edu- there's a policy for educational equity, um, ed- equal educational opportunities. We talked about search and interrogation, student photographs, um, some curriculum stuff. There's a couple of different ones that we looked over, but we'll ask the experts for some assistance with as well. Um, and we also talked about animals in schools, there's a policy for animals in schools. Um, so we have a lot on the, on the burners uh that are working out and drafting, so stay tuned.
Okay, thank you for your update. Uh, Buildings and Grounds, I met with the, the Director of Buildings and Grounds and Mr. Presnel, last week, we discussed some of the capital items that you folks saw this evening. Uh, we also discussed some of the COVID requirements, where we are with those. And then we discussed the energy reduction efforts if we are to uh join the green initiative with the, with the town of Southwick. Uh, we have a, another meeting scheduled uh for next month to, to new conversations. Any liaisons that would like to report out at this time?
Southwood Capital Committee met last week and will meet again for the final time this Thursday. Um, something to note, uh, last week's meeting, we heard from the Fire Chief and Police Chief. And um, there is quite the sizable ask on their plates, they're looking at a new communications, emergency communication system, which is ringing in at a million, one point five million. Um, so they're going to be having, they have a big ask this year, a big important ask, so something to keep on our, our minds, I guess.
Thank you for the update there. Last call on liaisons. Okay, moving on to our second public comment, let's get me to check the superintendent account.
Chairman Hulip, I have no public comments in, in the email.
And to committee discussion, neat old or new business for the seat.
So Jeff, I don't know if you want to go back to um the uh LPVAC, but I was digging through it here. And I'm pretty sure that um Steve Presnel has already mentioned this to you guys. Um, but the, there, there's been a um, a change in the amount of Medicaid reimbursement that is coming back to districts um this year for, for several different reasons, COVID being one of them. Um, and um, the LPVAC is taking steps to kind of rectify that, to make sure that it doesn't happen in the future. Um, Steve, I'm pretty sure that you're aware of this, you can probably do a better job explaining it if people are interested um at a later time.
I'd, I'd be happy to, um, I did attend a meeting today with other uh collaborative member, school business officials, and Anna Bishop from the Collaborative, where that was one of the topics that was uh was discussed. Um, with respect to our budget, we uh, we, we're not a huge beneficiary of uh significant funds through the Medicaid reimbursement program, but uh prior to the current year and um going, and what we've done for next year, you know, we were typically seeing about eighty or ninety thousand dollars in reimbursement. We've lowered, we had to lower that number for FY twenty-one, and we've maintained it at a low number of forty-five thousand for uh in districts. Uh, with the budget draft for FY twenty-two. Um, and uh, we're thinking that that is going to turn around, but it's not happening anytime fast, so. We can talk about it in, in more detail at a future meeting.
Okay, any other LPVAC item, Pam?
No, that, that was kind of the one that really stuck out to me, thank you.
All right, last call on old and new business. All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Still moved?
A second.
Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, have a good evening, everyone.